Indivisible, the routine and justice for all.
And who's doing the invocation? Mr. Young?
Dear Evan and father, thank you for this day. Please give us direction and guidance throughout this meeting. And please be with Melissa and her family. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Does anybody have anything on the agenda that they want to add or change?
I'd just like to take time out to thank everybody who stepped in, helped through this process with Melissa. I mean, I know it's pulled a lot of people from every department to work. I myself appreciate it, and I'm sure everybody up here does appreciate that. We know that you're working hard to catch up with everything. Thank you, guys, for stepping up.
Thank you.
And Debbie, on the agenda, there was one item that was in a draft of the agenda but got pulled off inadvertently, related to the Culvers project. And we can take care of that under the Director of Administration's.
So we're still doing it?
This is related to.
We're still doing the Culvers thing?
Yes, but this is in order to enter into an agreement for a water main extension. They're willing to come up Meyer Street and connect into our water main. So it's to discuss that.
So that's under new business?
We can just put it under my report.
Okay.
Either one.
It's cool.
And related to that, there are easements that are needed related to that. And I would be asking for your authorization to accept those.
Okay. For Culvers?
Correct. It'll be together.
Okay, the minutes from May 13th, 2025. Anybody have any objections, corrections?
I didn't have none.
I did not. I'll move to approve. One second.
Okay, Joe made a motion, Brad seconded. Can I have a roll call?
Tim Brown?
Yes.
Brad Goedecker?
Yes.
Joe Saylor?
Yes.
And Deborah Hendrickson?
Yes.
Pass four to zero.
Okay. Voucher packet, six, 10, 2025.
Sorry.
No questions?
No questions?
I'll do it.
No, I didn't even.
I'll second that.
Motion from Brad Goedecker, second from Tim Brown. Roll call?
Tim Brown, Brad Goedecker?
Yes.
Joe Saylor?
Yes.
And Deborah Hendrickson?
Yes.
Pass four to zero.
Okay, financial reports. Carmen, or Michaela, which one?
Real quick, if you'd like for us to read through the fund balances and such, we can. There's nothing out of the ordinary as far as our revenues and disbursements. We have, you'll see it next month, but we have received these in the settlement. And so you'll see those numbers, the uptick on our fund balances go up due to the June settlement. So fund balance for general fund is $588,534.87. Fund balance for sewer operating is $1,365,202.88. Sewer improvement is $1,052,796. Water operating is $783,181.98. And the water improvement fund balance is $616,523.42. There was nothing out of the ordinary as far as deposits and/or expenditures.
So the June settlement's not on here yet?
It's not. It's been deposited, but it has not been transferred. And then Michaela's got the interest for the month.
The next month's.
So accumulative throughout all of our accounts, we were able to profit $31,979.52 of interest.
Sounds good. All right. Excuse me. Special guest matters, 2025 Otto Lewis Scholarship recipients.
So we have both of our recipients from the Otto Lewis Memorial Scholarship. And Rhonda Egbert, Otto's daughter, was the one that helped to select that over, we had over 20 applicants for the scholarship program. So the two that were recipients this year, Jackson Cope and Lily Donica. So I'd like to see if you all could kind of step from behind the bench. We'd like to do a grabbing grin and picture with the.
No.
I don't have, I didn't print out another certificate, so no, like, no grabbing grin, just mountain, let's take a picture. Scholarship winners. And then Jackson's going to Indiana State University and Lily's going to ID Tech, right, to actually go into the fire system.
Oh.
You guys can come out from behind, watch your stuff. If I can get a picture.
I wouldn't like one of the students.
Yeah, you will.
Thank you.
Good job.
Congratulations.
I'm standing here, you guys stand down there.
I'll take a, I'll take a picture. And then actually Alyssa's back here from the Daily Journal. She has a fancy camera, so we'll have her take it. Or after that, I'll.
She's saying she needs a wide angle?
Congratulations, good luck.
Great. I think I found it on me. Been in Tennessee all I did.
Okay. Congratulations, Jackson Cope and Lily Donica. Okay, old business. Further consideration of expenditures and issuance of bonds for the fire department. The ordinance that we have here, that's the next one. So what?
I guess I'll start it. I have a problem with replacing all the trucks. I do, because they're low mileage. I think if we have issues with them, we should get them fixed and at least get a few more mileage out of them. Okay? I think that's the better deal for the town and the town's people. The one, the 97,000, that's a no-brainer. It's time to get rid of that one. Anything over, you know, getting close to 100, we kind of finally get it. But the lower mileage trucks, I think we should, in my opinion, and I'm only one, I think we should take them out. If there is an issue with them, get them fixed. It'd be cheaper than buying a new truck.
So do you want to hear my presentation?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Do you have a presentation? I didn't know, it didn't say who's speaking.
No, it doesn't say.
Well, I figure I just hope.
Yeah, I'm obviously Eric Funkhaus, we're the fire chief. So back again from last month, the continuation of last month's on old business. So not here to fight, not here to argue or anything else, or to change your mind on anything. But I do want to have a few things to say tonight, if I have a chance. So obviously, as I go through this and looking through this letter, I called Adam Stone today. I just got this letter today, like, two hours ago. So I haven't had a chance to go through it all. So I did read up on it before I got here this evening, just to kind of go through some of these options and talk through it. My recommendation, in my expertise and my 26 years, is, I would say this right now, replace the engine. I would recommend replacing the ladder with the bond. Now, throw the staff cars out. I was going to say that anyway. I'm good with that. Get rid of the staff cars. If that's a point of contention, then we'll just, I'm telling you, from a fire protection standpoint, you want an engine and you want a ladder in this town. So that's my recommendation. So that wasn't even one of the options that was presented to you tonight. And I did not have a chance to tell Adam. I talked to him this afternoon and said, hey, I'm going to throw this out there instead. So option three would be my recommendation. But option three, but get rid of the staff cars altogether. Now, the staff cars, we're going to be paid with cap cume, is what I was going to say. So that's money that's taxed and taken out for capital purchases. So that was money on hand, is what I was going to say on that. So my recommendation to him was throw another option at you guys and do this and do the bond. If you're going to take the money for the bond and the soft costs that you're going to put towards it, I would go there. So my recommendation would be get the engine, do the ladder. I still don't recommend putting $90,000. And to address a comment that was made last month at the council meeting, it was said, you know, it was a money grab. There is no money grab going on. And there is no absolute, we're not trying to hurt the taxpayer when it's all said and done. And I still don't recommend putting $90,000 into a 24-year-old ladder truck. It's going to need replaced in a few years, even if we do want to drive it off a cliff. So I still would not recommend that either on any of those comments that were made, you know, at the last council meeting. So that's kind of where my stuff is. Staff car mileage, Tim, I understand going for 100,000, but these are used for public safety. So this isn't the same as your neighbor down the street trying to get 100,000 miles and save money on a vehicle.
Right, and I understand that. That's why I said that one close to 100, that's a no-brainer for me. With 10,000 miles and then the other one with 40,000 miles, that's a little different. I mean, to me, it is. I think there's still life in there for us to get it by a couple more years and see if we can get it.
I would agree. I would just say that they're used totally for different purposes, I guess, is what I'm saying in the end. So I would say that it's not comparing apples to apples when you're talking about your neighbor down the street needing 100,000, buying 100,000 on a vehicle.
I agree. Yours is totally different than, but 100,000, when you trade it in, is 100,000.
Yeah.
Anything under 100,000 usually seems to bring just a little bit more money than one with over 100, is the thing I was thinking.
Rick, do you mind if I ask you real quick, what's your oldest vehicle in your fleet and the highest mileage that you have right now?
It's a 2012 Charger. I think it's right at 60,000.
Yeah.
But he went at least six years before getting a new car. Because they used to do it every three years. But, I mean, we didn't have the funds in the general fund, so we couldn't do it. So we went over six years probably for the police department got a new car.
Yeah.
And they're, they're, I don't know. I agree with the car part. The ladder truck?
Yep.
I just. I don't know. I just think that's a lot of money to spend ahead of plan.
Yeah.
Our plan was in a couple of years. So I'm looking at that 90,000 as like divided by two.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
You know, 45,000 a year to keep it running. And it's only gone out a couple of times.
Got it.
You know, I like, I want you to have what we need for you to have. But it's not like the engine that is something you drive all the time.
Yeah. No, it's especially piece of equipment. And that was, so I want to address some things that was in the letter that you guys had before you tonight. So let me read through this for quick.
Are we talking about the Stone?
Yeah, the Stone letter, yes. So in that, right there, it says, with that said, the White Island Fire Protection District debt limit would be 99% utilized. I agree with that. Yes, it would. But ultimately, at that point, you've replaced your biggest risks that are out there. You know what I mean? So at that point, if you need more capital purchases, I mean, then you're going to, you're still building cap cume, you know what I mean, over cash, over time, over the next 10 to 15 years. So you still have capital money sitting there. So your debt limit's utilized, yes, absolutely. But you're utilizing that on the front end and you're utilizing your soft costs and everything for the bond, which would all be rolled into this one, which you're going to do it again. So say we put 90,000 in this ladder and it blows up in a year from now, I'm still going to be coming back in here and asking for the same thing. You see what I'm saying? And now you're paying for the bond cost again, which you're issuing right now. Is that correct?
Yeah. How many do you have to add, say, if it's actually possible?
Yeah.
What are the approximate soft costs on this bond, if you know?
I don't have Adam's numbers in front of me, but I guess councilman would probably be around $100,000.
And I would add that on Adam's letter of page five, he's got an itemization. It looks like he's estimating 125,000 percent.
Okay.
Then it says additionally, we do not, we do recommend the town and its departments start to prioritize, plan, and proactively address needs. So we bought a used ladder truck, so I would agree with that statement. You know what I mean? It was never intended to be the long-term fix, you know what I mean? So ladder, you get 25 years, 20 to 25 years out of it. So it's 24 years. So I'm telling you, my recommendation in my 26 years of service is not to put $90,000 into a 24-year-old ladder. My recommendation is what I'm telling you from the fire chief. Then the second thing is to run statistics of the existing ladder and evaluating lower-cost alternatives. I'd love to know what lower-cost alternatives are out there for a ladder truck. So, and then it says, this research takes time. So the ladder truck that I'm presenting you is an FDIC truck that was $3.6 million. So it's 300,000 off right now. So we're getting it for 3.3. So that is a lower-cost alternative.
3.3, we were told 2.3.
Uh, two, I'm sorry, 2.6 is what it was at. And now, so.
So now it's a 2.3?
Yeah, 2.601, discounted cost of 2.3 million. So a savings of 300,508. You see what I'm saying? So the other thing, this research takes time, but would ultimately allow for the town to spec the apparatus which best meets the needs of the community. So from the time, so say something happens to this, we decide we're going to spec and go to spec. Now you're talking about a three-year wait time on a spec for a ladder truck to get it. So from the time you place the order and put everything together, then it takes three years to place that order and to get it in. So this is a demo truck that's already in service and ready to go. We would have it in two to three months. We would also suggest exploring policy-level changes on the building and planning fronts. So to me, I mean, that's up to you guys. If you want to stop anybody from building anything above two stories in the town of White Island, that's up to you, you know what I mean? And if you want to recommend that every single person has to put a residential sprinkler in every one of their houses as we go forward, I'd be all for it. So good luck with the lobbyists on that one, as we're moving forward. But so if we're not going to build warehouses, apartments, or anything else, we're going to deny all of that or commercial buildings that are over 10 foot tall. That's what ladder trucks are used for. We would also suggest exploring policy-level changes. In other words, what types of runs require a ladder truck? And could they have been prevented in the design phase? With either better-designed fire suppression, building access, or et cetera. There's nothing that's going to prevent you from needing an upper-level, you know, water supply when it comes to a fire that's broken out through the roof. I mean, I've been doing this 26 years. So ladder trucks are invaluable, and that's what you do. You hook them up to big water, and that's how you get your large amounts of water from an elevated master stream onto the fire itself. So that's my recommendation on that. So like I said, as I go down through here, staff, just to touch on a couple of other things, I still don't recommend that we fix the ladder that we have, you know what I mean? For the $90,000, I think you're just wasting your money. It was discussed last month at the council meeting that, you know, we can rely on Greenwood, Franklin, and Bartersville's ladder to provide our ladder services. And I would not recommend that. I mean, and I would throw out response times. I mean, if you need a ladder to make a rescue, you'd much rather have it sitting here. So, and then I always throw this out to everybody. We always talk about mutual aid versus mutual abuse. So, you know what I mean? If we're not willing to pay, or if our taxpayers aren't willing to pay for a ladder truck, you know what I mean, then why are we wanting somebody else to front the cost, you know, other communities? Why should the residents of Franklin, Greenwood, and Bartersville front the cost for their ladder truck? And then why would they want it to come to you to provide that service out of their city? You know what I mean, 20 minutes away? So the last thing I put on there, like I said, it's not an option in front of you tonight, but give up the staff cars. You know, I'm out of the staff cars. Throw those out altogether. So my recommendation again tonight would be do the bond, do the ladder, do the engine, and then the equipment that goes on it. That gives us everything.
We still, you still need $50,000 on engine repairs.
For engine 71.
Yes, yeah. So that gives us the current engine with the new motor, basically. It'll be replaced. So everything's already been worked on. It's almost done. There was one more part that ended up having to be shipped in, so it should be done this week, I think, was the final, is what I've heard. So.
We hope.
Yeah, and like I said, I'm glad that they're fixing everything while it's there so that we're not having to take it out of service as soon as it comes back.
I agree.
I would rather spend the money on the front side and have it come back to us in good running order, you know what I mean, for the firefighters to work on a truck.
I agree.
Reliable where it needs to be.
So you're wanting to put the ladder truck in the bond?
Yes.
And do the.
Engine as a lease.
Engine as a lease?
Yes, correct. Yeah, that's my recommendation.
And the money you're going to use for the lease is the.
Cap cume. So it's already.
Cume?
Yeah, cap cume. So that's what's going to pay for the lease. So like I said, I didn't get a chance to run through all these as long as I had hoped, you know what I mean, with this letter and everything. So in talking with Adam today, so the bond amount would be, you know what I mean, on option three, I don't see what he put into the bond.
I don't have that.
Is this thing what's actually in the bond itself?
Look at that, page five, I think that's everything. On page five, do you have a page five?
Yeah.
That has, I'm sorry, that's the full meal.
To be in 7965. No, three million.
Yeah, okay. So scenario three, selected to be conservative. So yeah, in the bond, you'd have engine 71 repaired. So instead of us paying 50,000 out of our cap cume right now, we'd basically be reimbursing ourselves off the bond for the $50,000 worth of work that's already paid for on engine 71 that'll be coming back to us this week. Estimated repair for ladder and equipment, that was, that's a different option right there. That 90,000 is if we decide to fix the current old 24-year-old ladder. You see what I'm saying? The estimated cost of the ladder and equipment is 2.5 million. So once you factor in the 2.3 plus the equipment that would go on it, it puts it up around 2.5. The estimated bond cost of issuance is 125,000 percent. Thank you. But yeah, so my recommendation is lease and pay the lease payment. So the bond would be funded by the taxes, obviously, that's, you know. So I will say, if you look at option three, he put in there, you know what I mean, the cost of taxpayer impact for 100,000 is $90 per year to be able to do that, is what he put in there. Now, I will say that he didn't put this in there, but that's if they're not at the tax cap. So if circuit breaker doesn't play in, if circuit breaker plays in, then obviously they're not going to pay anything more at all. You know what I mean? So if they're already at the 1% cap, you won't see anything, you know, impacted them at all. Then it would be paid by the businesses, apartments, and stuff like that. You know what I mean? So different ways that it gets funded out, you know what I mean, in that scenario. So the lease appropriation would be 105,000 per year for 10 years. So, you know, we're bringing in roughly 200,000 a year in cap cume. So that's what I was telling you that, you know what I mean, if we're taking, if we're bringing in 200,000 in revenue in capital funds, so 105 of it's going to pay the lease. So we're still building cash at $95,000 a year. You see what I'm saying, over the next 10 years? So, you know, while we're doing that lease term, so if we're doing 95,000 a year for 10 years, I mean, that's 950,000. So that kind of takes away the option of, you know, there's no capital purchases that can be made during that timeframe, because you still have, you know, just under $1 million in 10 years built off capital funds during cap cume. So it's funded off of numbers that we already have and that we're collecting for capital purchases for the fire department.
So if you bond the ladder truck?
Yeah.
It wouldn't be a $90,000 repair fee?
Correct.
Old truck?
Yes.
What are you doing with the old truck?
My recommendation is at that point, just to let it go. So I would say scrap it, you know what I mean? And I could find out, I don't know if we're going to get anything for it. I wouldn't want to sell it to somebody, obviously, if it's in bad shape, you know what I mean, and we need $90,000 in repairs. So in good faith, I couldn't turn around and sell it. Now, I would just say that you put it out to the boneyard, you know what I mean? And that's my recommendation on that truck. So it was $75,000 in the first. Now, we can scrap, you know, the equipment off of it and different things like that, you know what I mean? So some of the equipment would come back. So when I'm telling you 100,000 in equipment, you know what I mean, that's hoses. And there's stuff on that ladder truck right now that I can take off, saws and tools and different things like that to save somebody from purchasing the purchase of equipment on this new truck.
90,000 repair on the existing ladder truck, is that, that's hydraulic system, if I'm remembering right?
Yeah, that is bringing in cranes, lifting the ladder off, and changing out the bushings on the ladder itself so that it functions properly. And then also, it needs about 20 to 25,000. Not, the 90,000 includes, you know, taking it to Detroit Diesel, which is the motor itself, and doing a bunch of motor work on it. So we've got to get somebody to lift the ladder off of it, change out the bushing so that it functions properly to a correct level where it needs to be. And then it needs ballpark, I mean, that's 70,000 for that alone. And then 20 to 25,000 in motor work that needs to be done. Now, no guarantees that when they get into it that they don't. I mean, like this last project with the engine, I mean, every two weeks, we're getting another $5,000 bill. So when I'm telling you 90, that's the ballpark price they gave me on the front. There's no guarantee that I'm signing a contract that says $90,000 when they get into it that they don't find something else.
Eric, how much did we put into the ladder truck last year? Do you remember? Because it was out of service for a period of time.
It was, yeah. It was ballpark 24 to 25,000, I thought, is what we put into it already. So I'm happy to answer any other questions as well.
The question I got is, the gentleman told us that it's not a good thing for the town to max that out. If I am not mistaken, our financial guy, Adam, didn't he say that he would recommend maxing the bond out?
Well, he's saying, don't max the bond out.
Right, that's what I wanted to know.
Put this in cume funds. His cume funds would pay for the engine.
That's what I was just asking.
Still maximizing the constitutional debt limit for the fire department is what you're doing. Now, the one thing I will say the difference is, and it was brought up last month, and I disagree with it, this does not affect the town at all, you know what I mean? So this doesn't take away from anything that Carmen and Slim are wanting to do with their constitutional debt limit for the town itself. So this is just the fire department alone by itself, is set aside, so.
Well, I mean, it does affect the town.
The overall tax.
The town sits, yeah, the town sits within the fire district. They're not exactly contemporaneous, but insofar as the property rate, tax rate of the town, it does affect it. I guess I'm a lot more comfortable with doing things that might result in a slowing of the lessening of the tax rate versus raising the tax rate.
Yeah.
I do see there being a fundamental difference there. I'm not absolutely certain where that, I guess, cutoff point lies within these options.
When we lease this truck, is it leased to buy or is it just?
Yeah, you own it at the end. So basically, you're leasing it over 10 years, and at the end of 10 years, it's paid off.
That's kind of what I was, I was assuming that, but I've thought of your ask.
Yeah, and it's paid by, and like I said, it's not like we're asking for additional money. It's paid for money that we're already collecting. So we're collecting the maximum on cap cume at this time, which we set that rate a few years ago. So, and as the assessed value of the town goes up, you know, the rates could go down as well. So we're basing off historical rates, you know what I mean, and talking with Adam. So say we have a, you know, an average rate of 10% growth, you know what I mean? And we keep that, though, you know, the rates may not be nine cents or 10 cents overall for the tax rate. You may see that go down in the future, if you had a 16% growth rate, you know what I mean, on a year. So the taxes for everybody would go down. And I think historically, in talking to Adam, and I think, didn't we talk about it, that it did go down over time as well?
Yeah, it has.
You know, in the last few years.
Yeah, we can't get, well, we should be able to get, because you can only grow so much, that's it.
And this would be an Adam question, but I think, like I said, maximizing the debt limit this year doesn't mean it doesn't reset in the future, you know what I mean? So depending on how the state looks at it, you know what I mean? If we're considered a district, we don't have the cooling off period like the towns do. So if they're treating it as a district, you know what I mean, with Centerville One, so the capital purchases, you can come back and do another bond in the future, I guess, is what I'm saying. So there is the opportunity to be able to, you know, do another bond in the future. Even though we're maximizing it now, doesn't mean that it goes away next year or the year after, you know what I mean, based on the growth and everything else. after, you know what I mean, based on the growth and everything else. So, and then I'm still telling you, you're growing cash, you know what I mean, for capital purchases, which is, that's the only purposes that cap CUM fund can be used for, is for capital purchases as we go forward.
So the total bond would be 2.5. That includes soft costs, engine repairs, and the ladder truck. Because the ladder truck is 2.3.
Yes.
Engine repairs is?
Yeah, I think it was 2.3, and I think we put 100,000 for equipment, what I'm talking about.
But you said you could pull equipment off.
Yeah.
So just for clarity, Eric, the 2.5 in Adam's Page 5, in your view, could be 2.5 or 2.3, if you're staying?
Well, I'm saying you would take out in Adam's.
I'm talking the line item for?
The ladder truck.
Third one for the ladder truck and equipment.
This one here.
It should be 2.3, not 2.5.
2.5 included all the equipment, not all this.
Is that it?
That was my understanding.
For the equipment for the ladder, is that what takes us back up to 2.5?
Yeah, I would say the, the equipment for the ladder, yeah. And, so yeah, it could be, I mean, the ladder cost itself is 2.3. So I would say 2.4 is what I would say, you know what I mean? Because I would say, put 100,000 in there for equipment, we'll save whatever we can off the old ladder, you know what I mean, and put it on here. So I would say, just go ahead and ask for 2.4. And then that would throw off all of your options as well. So when we're saying 9 to 10 cents or $90, you know what I mean, now that changes.
Right, so now it's only 2.5.
Yeah, exactly.
Or approximate.
Instead of 2.7, yeah.
Yeah.
So then we're not, again, we're still not maxing out our debt limit. You see what I'm saying? You know, your constitutional debt limit is maxed out with option 3, and that's what he ran it at, is the 2.7. So at that point, you're not maximizing. So when we're saying that we're maximizing.
But the difference between leaving 100,000 in our debt cap and nothing in the debt cap is insignificant.
But if you don't use all of your bond money within a certain amount of time?
Yeah.
What happens?
Is it the case, are you asking if we issued 2,525,000 and you didn't spend it all?
Yes.
Under the federal tax laws, it needs to be spent within three years.
Right.
If you don't spend it within that timeframe, now, you could hold on to it and hope you had projects, but presumably, if you complete your projects and you have extra monies, this type of bond issue, you just apply it to debt service on the bond you would redeem.
So you use it to pay down the bond?
That's right, for this type of bond issue. There's some kinds of bonds where if you have surplus proceeds, you can use them for a similar type of project. That's for bond issues that are not payable from property tax. So a good example's a water bond. Complete the project, you have an extra 500,000. You could either use it to pay down debt service, or you could go do another water improvement project.
Okay.
And do we got any idea how much this is going to cost the town, or the residents on per taxes? Is there a percentage?
Well, that's what, that's what these options are showing.
Yeah, that's what I was looking at. So.
So this, this will go down if we don't use the 2.765?
Right, that's what I wanted to know.
That's tax, taxpayer impact for 100,000, maybe $90 per year.
Okay, thank you.
But like I said, if we don't use all of that, then it'll go down.
Right.
Yeah, the five-year term is definitely out. Would you guys have any preferences?
I'm having a hard time with the ladder. I see the potential to save approximately $300,000 over the course of doing it the other way, basically. But I don't know, that margin is thinner than I'm happy with. The margin on the debt limit for the, and, and, you know, the functional increase in taxes. We didn't have a ladder truck up until, what, about four years ago, three years ago?
Yes.
We bought a used one, and I remember we bought the used one because it was a deal that on Greenfield was getting rid of it.
It was, yes.
And so we did that in light of the warehouses at the interstate. I guess I'm having a hard time with replacing the engine in the ladder at exactly the same time when we just initially got a ladder.
Yep.
And in light of SB 1, where the state legislature has shown its willingness to, to very much tinker with and very much limit our ability to fund ourselves, I, I struggle with pushing it that close to the margins. That's just me.
I mean, if they're going to, if he was going to put the engine in a, why not, I mean, we even have to get a bond right now and go ahead and put it in a lease and save on soft costs.
Well, the bond gives us certain benefits insofar as.
I know.
Our caps. But I don't think that.
I like a GEO bond. I like a GEO bond because it helps us get our tax money we can't get.
That's just my thoughts. I stand certainly open to listen to anybody else, and if it feels differently.
So what do you think, Brad?
It's, I mean, it's a no-brainer that, like, we need a new engine, and that's getting, the backup is now getting repaired, or the soon-to-be backup. I also am having a hard time that we have, like, now another emergency with, with the ladder truck. I mean, I just thought that was part of the plan that we're moving forward with and trying to buy a couple of years there.
Right.
Like, I mean, I just, I mean, it just feels like everything is all of a sudden, emergency, you know, I don't know, it doesn't seem like a reasonable ask. I don't, I don't know that it does. So, yeah, I mean, I, I'm not sold on that.
So we have to make a decision tonight so he can buy his engine?
I believe that, yeah, the memorandum of understanding or the option to buy.
Right, and we've already agreed to the engine.
To do something, right?
Yeah.
The engine we'd agreed on.
Yes, we already agreed on it. We already agreed on 50,000 for the repairs for 71.
Yeah.
Does anybody have a motion?
When do you have to know about the ladder truck? Is it, can we table it?
I would say you more do something tonight because you risk pushing the engine cost, I mean, time-wise, you know what I mean, on making sure that everything's on its time to pay for the engine when it's ready.
Well, that's the thing I have heartburn on, is the ladder truck. I mean, that's a lot of money. When I first come on here, we talked, like you said, two years now. We went from one fire truck to another fire truck to an engine truck, and then we're just spending a lot of money. And then the financial guy says, we shouldn't max out a bond. And I'm learning about all this myself, guys, so you got to bear with me. It just seems like a lot of money. And with us having to deal with water rates, sewer rates, and everything like that, it just seems like we're hitting the residents, we're going to be hitting them pretty hard with everything. And that's including fire, sewer, water, and all that.
Yeah.
That's, that's what I have a problem with.
I'm fine with 2B personally. I'm fine with including the 2Bs.
Again.
That one, the tax impact is nominal over 2A.
Three years.
Fire fund.
Talking about that.
Insofar as you're not, you're not putting a bunch out of there. That would seem to me to have one of the lower impacts to the individual taxpayer.
2A?
2B.
2B?
2B, I guess, was, was where I generally fell on it, but that's just, that's one person's opinion, and I do not profess to have the right answer.
That would include the staff vehicles.
Yes, it does.
Well, I'm not, I'm not agreeing to replacing all three. I'm.
Yeah.
My reasoning in replacing all three staff vehicles is that if we are going to take out the bond, that's a way that we can include those in the bond and get the benefit of those tax dollars. It's not quite as drastic of a measure as a $2.5 million ladder, but it does avail us of some soft costs or sunk costs on it. That was my reasoning for going with 2B.
And then that puts the ladder truck on the back burner for a couple of years, is that what you're thinking?
Yes.
Okay.
Like, it fixed, replaces the engine, repairs engine 71, and.
Correct.
And.
And the ladder repair.
Yes.
Okay, but are we going to, and just like Eric was saying, it could be a few more dollars once they get the ladder truck in there. Is there a, like a cushion that you can put on a bond?
That would be.
Separate bond.
And that's what I'm asking, if there's room for, like, if they come back and say, hey, it's going to be this much more, then we know it would be covered under a bond. That way, you didn't have to pull it out of your funds, we know it is under a bond.
I don't have the average report, but for that 2B, does he have a kind of a bond amount?
Yeah, and actually, you would still have your CUM fund, funds that you could use if that.
1.2 million.
Came over.
And that's what I was curious about, if we had something to cushion in case there was, because look, I mean, we've dealt with that old fire truck. Okay, so 1.26. Yeah, I mean, you know, it's up to you all, but if you wanted to say, you know, let's do 1.5, or whatever, or, you know, whatever you think the cushion is, you could do 1.36 to get that extra cushion. And then if it's in there, you need it, it's available, if you decide you don't need it, then you.
Towards the debt service?
Put it towards debt service on the bond.
I would feel more comfortable at doing something like that, just to protect you guys, for you don't have to come back and say, hey, they're doing this, they're doing that. And if it buys us a couple of years, then it worked. If it don't, then, I mean, I guess we're just rolling the dice, and, and I understand that. But I, I think, in my opinion, and like I said, I'm new to all this financial stuff, but I would think we'd want a cushion in there in case we did run into a problem. What was it for C right now on that ladder truck that we could cover it under that bond? And that's just my thought, you know? Because we had to discuss the other truck three times, because it kept coming back with a little bit more, a little bit more, and a little bit more. And that would just be my only thought, and I don't know if it's the right rate, right way or what, but that's just my thought.
So are we looking at, are you guys, Joe proposed gaining a 2B and including the staff vehicles, is that now the primary one we're honing in on?
Seems to be.
I just have an issue with the town cars. That's the thing what's driving me the nuts. The two what's got low miles could be fixed, that's the only thing that drives me nuts, is the one, I mean, yours has got less than 10,000, you said?
Was that?
The one you drive's got less than 10,000. Yours is going back into flake. Now, what about the one with 40,000? Is it going to get fixed and go?
Yeah, trade them in, up at Kelly Chevrolet was the plan. So then we've gotten the price on those. What was it, it was like 14,000, you know what I mean, between the two vehicles that we were trading in, between the pickup truck and the Durango that we were getting? Total, yeah, yeah. 14,000 between the two.
And, okay, so you're trading in a pickup truck and a Durango?
13 pickup truck and then a 2016 Durango.
Okay, I thought they were Tohos. See, I was under the wrong impression. Yeah, I thought they were Tohos.
The new cars are.
Yeah, the new ones, the new ones you want, yeah, but I thought the old ones were too.
Yeah.
Okay. I feel more comfortable with 2B, in my opinion, and I can deal with the town cars.
I'll make a motion to do 2B, but adding a buffer, bring the total bond amount to 1,460,000. And bringing up with, basically, the terms as laid out in option 2B of Adam's memorandum for the council.
Okay, I have a motion. A second?
I'll second. Before we move forward, I would refer to Dennis to see, is there any concerns that you have with what's been proposed in terms of bonding requirements and whatever it says, or any issues that you want to make sure we're aware of?
No, just that for purposes of proceeding on the ordinances, so this motion passes, then we'll still hold a public hearing on the appropriation, and when it comes time for these ordinances in front of you, adopt them as amended to include the 1,460, where the blanks are for the non exceed amounts.
Yeah.
Otherwise, I think.
Good.
I feel more comfortable with that.
Yeah. Okay, I have a motion by Joe Saylor, a second by Brad Goodecker. Michaela, can you do roll call?
Tim Brown?
Yes.
Brad Goodecker?
Yes.
Joe Saylor?
Yes.
Debra Hendrickson?
Yes. All right, next item is ordinance 2025-08, the bond ordinance for the fire protection, the purchase of the fire truck, and other purposes.
So just for clarity, on the blanks in the proposed ordinance at this point in time, is it correct that all of those blanks would be filled in with the same number?
This ordinance pretty much reads the same as the other GEO bond we received.
Yes, with the exception, near the end, I believe it was, in light of the situation with the clerk treasurer, we made it clear that the deputy clerk treasurer was authorized to sign documents in lieu of the clerk treasurer, if she was not available. I think that's section 23 on page 19. And it states, "In the event the clerk treasurer is authorized or directed to make a decision or determination hereunder and is unable to do so due to incapacity or unavailability for any reason, the council hereby authorizes the deputy clerk treasurer, upon the advice of the town's municipal advisor, to make such determination. Additionally, and notwithstanding the foregoing, in the event the clerk treasurer is unable to execute the bonds or any related documents due to incapacity or unavailability for any reason, the deputy clerk treasurer is hereby authorized to execute such bonds and documents in the clerk treasurer's place instead, with the same course and effect as if executed by the clerk treasurer. For purposes of Indiana Code 36567, the council hereby approves, ratifies, and confirms the clerk treasurer's appointment of Michaela Rich as deputy clerk treasurer."
So you'll be calling her and saying, you know, this is the disbursement I just received, you approve? Yeah.
They're comfortable with this. You know, ideally, when these situations arise, we always try to get the clerk treasurer's signature.
Yeah.
But people get ill, they go on vacation. That's why we have deputies, and typically, that's what we rely on, and we feel very comfortable with this language, making the ordinance, because that way we've got a council blessing of it.
Okay. Okay. Anybody have a motion for ordinance 2025-08?
I'll move to approve.
With the?
With the, with the entry of that number and then the.
1,460,000. I'll second. With all that stuff.
Michaela, roll call?
Tim Brown?
Yes.
Brad Goodecker?
Yes.
Joe Saylor?
Yes.
And Debra Hendrickson?
Yes.
Pass for zero.
Okay, ordinance 2025-09, appropriation of proceeds of the fire protection bonds to fund the purchase of the fire truck and other fire purposes. Public hearing, and this is the final reading. The amount needs to be filled in. So we're going to have a public hearing first?
Down left.
Yes.
Okay, we're going to open the public hearing at 7:50 PM. Anyone have anything they'd like to say? Comment?
Concerning ordinance 2025.
Concerning, yes, concerning ordinance 2025-09, or 08, 09. Sorry. Public hearing closed at 7:51 PM. And any motion?
I'll move to approve.
Again, with the.
Again, with the 1,460,000 dollar number.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion with Joe Saylor, and a second with Brad Goodecker. Michaela, roll call, please.
Tim Brown?
Yes.
Brad Goodecker?
Yes.
Joe Saylor?
Yes.
And Debra Hendrickson?
Yes.
All right, pass for zero.
All right, next item on the list, ordinance 2025-07, repealing the redundant section 50.42A, sewer connection fees, final reading.
I guess we went over last night. I don't know if you all have any questions, I was just cleaning up our code and repeating, again, repealing that redundancy in the connection fees. So if anybody has any questions, let me know. If not, I can ask for a motion to approve.
Move to approve 2025-07.
I'll second.
I have a motion, Brad Goodecker, second with Joe Saylor. Michaela, roll call, please.
Tim Brown?
Yes.
Brad Goodecker?
Yes.
Joe Saylor?
Yes.
And Debra Hendrickson?
Yes.
Pass for zero.
Okay, next item on the agenda, invigorate HR proposal of services consideration.
So as you recall, earlier this year, we came to you all and we worked on an assessment of our HR processes as they are. of our HR processes as they are right now. And Invigorate came back with their assessment on some suggestions of things that we could do internally to correct or to better with our HR practices, and then also some options that would be kind of a hybrid approach. So working with Invigorate as well as the town staff. The biggest thing that kind of came to light is that one of the things that they were very passionate about is creating the junior chief champion. This isn't the person that they would come, that an employee would come talk to when they have a situation. It's just more of helping get those processes in place with our onboarding, our offboarding, and employee handbook and such, and just making sure that those things are kind of our pieces and pieces are taken care of. And so I have kind of stepped into that, just making sure that the process is kind of moving along. We do have one part-time employee, Cindy, that works two days a week, that not only kind of handles some tactical tasks of entering employees' information into the system, but she also does payroll. So again, she works underneath the clerk treasurer. Totally your guys' call. I mean, I already have enough on my plate, but it is something that I'm passionate about, is making sure that our employees are getting what they need when they need it. And so having somebody that's here more on a full-time basis, that can answer those questions and help people, like here's a perfect example. We had somebody on-boarded in the middle of the month, and nobody told them what their start date was for their employee benefits. I don't think that that's appropriate. I think we need to be more straightforward. When somebody starts on their first day, we sit down and we give them the package. A lot of our data wasn't updated in our system as far as updated employee salaries, which could affect your benefits if you're on short-term or long-term disability. And so making sure that we've got somebody that's paying attention to that and keeping us in tune with where we need to be. As we've talked, the employee handbook needs some updating. And as we grow, we start to hit those numbers of staff where it requires us to follow more federal guidelines and things of that nature. So again, there was a lot of information in here. It's my suggestion. It's totally your guys' decision, but I would like to see the more of the strategic HR kind of come underneath the director of administration and the town. That would only include, you know, again, just helping kind of get those processes in place. It's up to you on how, who does that, and where that sits. Just because I know that obviously, I'll call it out, we have a conflict of interest, you know, with slimmerized relationship. And I don't want that to cause any... I clearly, I have experience in employee benefits. I know our benefits are not being shared with our employees the way that they should be. When I left, when I left in 2021, whatever that was, 2020, 2021, I asked what my COBRA options were. And I was told, I don't know.
We didn't have COBRA at the time.
But I'm just saying, like, you know, here I'm asking as an employee, and I know some frustrations of other employees when it comes to learning that I thought we had coverage for this and we don't. And so it's kind of a goal of mine was to get the employee benefits in order. So I'm open to answer any questions. I'd like for us to continue our conversation with Invigorate on the hybrid options. But I feel like there are some things we can do internally, as well as looking to Invigorate, and this was one of Tim's biggest thing, is we do need somebody for our employees to talk to when there's a situation, and they don't feel comfortable either going to their supervisor or another employee in the town, because confidentiality is something that is of concern, too. So I still think that there's, there needs to be a better, a stronger relationship with Invigorate, but we'll kind of, you know, figure that out as we go along. But that's, that's my kind of take on this, as far as, you know, our next steps, or what is more the tactical and strategic kind of approach to our HR. And it can be a fluid. It doesn't have to be something that's coming directly over to the director of administration. But that, again, I'm just making a suggestion.
So I have a question on this proposal of services.
Yes.
These fees that I'm looking at?
Yes.
Is this a yearly fee?
No, this is a project cost. So I know you all like to see project costs. I'm sorry. These aren't hourly. I said, in order for us to kind of move forward with you all for budgeting purposes, I would need a project cost for, so that, that is what that is, the total cost. Now, the only thing that is...
1,465.
...co- amended is how we have that hourly rate for, you know...
Just for this session.
For the employees, if we end up kind of setting up something that Invigorate for them to go to for those employee needs that they have, they can't, you know, feel comfortable talking for another hour and a half. So that's the $180 an hour is their hourly rate for that. We didn't set, like, we haven't talked, gotten into the not to exceed or, you know, what does that even look like as far as helping our employees reach out to Invigorate for?
So are you done after all of these, or every year you have to pay something?
I would say, and I kind of put an estimate timeline, that was totally, you know, now that we're already in, I still think we can get, like, the performance evaluation process kind of figured out by, so we're ready to go before the end of the year.
16,000.
But it doesn't mean we have to do everything this year. I think my key things were the employee handbook, and I know, like, Rick, and Slim, and even Melissa, we've talked about needing to update that employee handbook. That's...
Yes.
That's a priority. And then I would like to get better at our onboarding and offboarding process. Those are my two priorities that I think we need to tackle first. If we get to performance evaluations, great. Is that something that, I mean, we're, we have a system now. It's just more of trying to help us all be on the same system. Like, police and fire in certain positions have to have different types of criteria. But as far as, like, are they a good worker? Do they show up to work? Are, you know, their attendance and things like that, those are standard, but...
Well, it doesn't matter if it's police or fire. They all come through here. They're hiring, they're onboarding, and offboarding comes through here.
Right. And that's, that's where...
So everything needs to be the same.
I mean, for a performance evaluation, that's what I'm...
I'm in, yeah. I'm in, I have no problem with you undertaking HR.
I do.
I, well, because most, most places clerk treasurer doesn't control HR.
They have clerk, the HR should report to this board, just like she does.
No, I'm talking about, it's that clerk treasurer now.
It shouldn't be under her. It should be under the board, and the board takes care of it. That's how it should be, because if we got a problem out there, she, they need to report it to us. This is my opinion, okay? You got enough on your plate. I get it, HR's your passion, but I think the employees need something they can go to, and I think it needs to be directly report to the board on...
No, I mean HR.
That's what I'm talking about.
The office, the office.
She's talking about, like, the tactical, the...
Yes, the person who runs it.
Correct, should be under us, not, not Carmen.
That person can't be under us because we're not here every day.
They can be a supervisor, and they can come to us if questions, and then they've got them. What I'm saying is, they can't be under Carmen. I think they need to be under, the board makes the decisions, they come to the board. We got a president, what can be reached at any given time. That's just something that we should step up as a board member and do. That's just my opinion.
So let me, let me just pose this to you. I don't want to deal with the employee relations portion of that. And I'm not asking for that at all. That is not, like, I do feel like that is a conflict. But what I'm asking for is everything, so health benefits. I come, we come to you all to approve what our plans are, what the costs are, what, what you're going to allow the employees to get as far as benefits. It would be navigating that. It would be navigating the, any COBRA, any workers' comp, any, and I'm involved in a lot of those anyways, because they end up falling through the cracks, and then I have to come in and kind of help pick up to make sure. And I know the lingo, so it'd be things like that. It wouldn't be, and again, you guys all approve those contracts when we work with United Healthcare, all of our ancillary benefits, workers' comp, things of that nature. The onboarding and offboarding, again, that's been a gap that I've seen. I've, you know, since even when I started here, is, you know, when somebody starts, they get a full, like, benefit package, not just, here's your salary. You know what's really hard for us to recruit, and Tim, you would understand this as well, is we can't pay what the private sector pays.
Correct.
Because, but we have to, we have to show them in our benefits. Like, and we can talk, okay, you get five days at this much, and you get, you get 12 holidays. But there's ways to put numbers and monetary amounts to that, even though they don't technically see that through their paycheck. And these are the types of projects that are able to help us with our recruitment and, you know, and just keeping our employees, because somebody's like, oh, I'm going to go over here because I'm going to make $2,000 more. Well, when you break it down, it's really not, not that much more. Our health insurance benefits are extraordinary compared to other companies. And so that's what I'm asking for. I'm not, I don't, I don't want to be the one, when I say I want to do benefits, it's the insurance and, and making sure that, that all of our ducks are in a row. Because right now, I'm handling all of that on the commercial and general liability. When we have an incident, like an auto claim, where we have a, you know, a civil tort claim, or, you know, even a, a general liability claim, like, I've been the one handling that on the commercial side of our business.
Look, Tim, would it be fair to say that you want, basically, appeals and grievances to come through this board, not through the town manager or the director of administration, director of operations, his office?
Correct.
Is that okay?
And the reason is, is we rely on Carmen for everything. But, and you called it out, husband and wife. Some people might not feel they can be comfortable to talk to you about Slim or Slim about you, because you're a husband and wife. It just, it just, I think it just puts so much tension on our guys. I mean, if the guys are not working right, doing right, I'm all for, hey, it's time to move them on, get someone here who's going to work hard and do the best job that they can. But I'm also, they need a breathing room. They need to feel that if there is an issue, they could go to someone besides you two. And it's nothing against you two.
I, I, I agree with you that on that portion of it, there needs to be a mechanism within the employee handbook for, basically, appeals and grievances that, you know, gives you the ability to come before us, I would assume in some sort of executive session.
Correct.
So I guess whatever we do with Invigorate, I would ask that they, we, we have them help us draft. I, I know I looked at the policy years ago. I don't remember the ins and outs of it, but review that and just see, see if we can have something that, that makes it clear that there is some, some availability of appeal or grievance.
I think the other thing is, is that I'm trying, I have, there are a lot of things that this town is exposed to as far as risk. Obviously, an accident with a vehicle, an injury, a personal injury with an employee, or even with, with anybody walking down our street, whatever. We have a lot of gaps on where we need to protect the town better. And we've had a lot of claims that have shown us otherwise, that we're not, we have a lot of gaps. And so that's where just trying to identify what those gaps are and help us, you know, protect the town as much as possible and reduce that risk. And again, that's more even on the commercial and general liability, but even when it comes to our employees and how things have been handled in the past. So, you guys call it, it's not something we have to decide today.
Well, like I said, I've just...
I haven't had time to actually talk about it.
Well, this is pretty much about Invigorate. So I'm not against Invigorate. I don't like it they give us a price, and then after every little price, it says, and meetings will be extra, traveling will be extra, la, 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 la.
And that's, like I said, the project cost. So if I, if we could move forward, at least with the employee handbook, we've got to get that going. And if you guys want me to kind of spearhead that, that's great. It would still, it would involve all the department heads, that one, and, and the, and the onboarding. But again, this is where, I'll just, I'll just say it, I've, I've run into roadblocks where I'm told that I'm not giving you access to this. Well, you know, and, and that's where I need a better working relationship with the person that's currently kind of handling that, to say, like, no, the council has given me the authority to be able to, to work through these issues.
Well, wouldn't there be a different set of handbooks for the chief, for the police versus the fire versus the town? Or is it just...
No, employees and employee, except for...
Well...
He has his own ordinance, but...
Well, there's certain things that they carry that our workers don't carry, like weapons, radios, and stuff like that. And I didn't know that.
But that's in their SOPs.
I'm just asking.
Right, he has his...
So our, our employee handbook, like, they're on a different pay structure.
Right.
And whatnot. So our employee handbook has our, we'll call them civilian employees, and our police, and then our fire, and it lays out those things.
Okay.
That's where they have, they have the general orders of the department that exist entirely separately.
And his own SOPs that he keeps over there.
That's what I, I wanted to make sure, because it's like, is...
I think we should provide Carmen direction to pursue with Invigorate for onboarding process services and...
At least the first three sections.
I'm onboarding now.
And then we can continue to go down other things that are, we think are good, especially if they perform to your liking.
And are we going to talk about...
I'm okay with the first three sections.
As well as the performance evaluation, is that what you mean by the first three? When you're looking at the last page, the project, or what?
No, the first section, and it's 2,500. The second section, employee handbook, 1750. And the third section, performance evaluation forms, 1,900.
Okay.
The survey...
No, that, I was just making sure that that, those, when you said the first three, that that's what you meant.
But are we still going to work on what Joe suggested?
And then possibly the last one, the, the action training, disciplinary action training there.
It would be part of the employee handbook.
That's what I, okay. I just want to make sure that was in there.
I mean, we have to approve the employee handbook.
Right.
Okay. Have we thought, have there been thoughts on hiring a full-time HR here, or anything like that?
I don't think we need full-time, but...
It's a long time for you guys, guys. You guys still don't have a full-time person.
Yeah, we do. We do now.
Do now, but how long?
Yeah. No, we had, what's his name on the back of this? We had him forever. We, we hired part-time for a while, and then they ended up going full-time.
Yeah.
And we've had two...
So I can see a full-time person in a couple of years.
Yeah, that's what I was asking. If it's something we're thinking about, we need to put in, you know, in a couple of years or something, and see how it works out.
Okay.
Go ahead.
We'll move forward with the onboarding employee handbook and the performance evaluation with Invigorate. We'll revisit. I'm, I'm just telling you, the employee...
That's the first thing you're going to do anyway.
The personal what?
I said, the employee benefits and how we do things need some, some true attention. Just in the absence in the last three weeks, I've come across a couple of hiccups that we need to, somebody needs to take the, the bull by the horns and get corrected. So...
Yeah.
We can discuss that offline if anybody's interested.
Curious.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, conflict of interest. This is a firefighter.
I have...
Is this...
I provided one.
I have, I provided one, and then while two of them were here, they did, they wore my email. So I have theirs. I had them fill them out. But it's up to you all if you want to discuss the...
I'm kind of upset because they left.
Yep.
Because I need to, I, they hire employees. They hire employees, and then they don't work for months and months and months. And we have, we pay for email addresses, we have paperwork they don't turn in. And I, you know, I wanted to say, is this person going to work?
Well, this, this is my whole thing. I think in the employee handbook, we can set those, those parameters.
Yes.
And then if you're going to be employed, whether you are a firefighter, or, you know, even, and I'm not going to pull you out, Rick, but even like our reserve police officers, like, there needs to be somewhat, even though, like, reserve officers don't get paid, but some sort of commitment that says you will work X amount of either hours or days within a period of time, because my concern, yours is on the emails and... Yes, I, I did find...
I never had a problem with reserves. I've never had a problem with paperwork. But firefighters...
And that's where I was going to say, is I think that's a liability on the town. Because how do we know when the last time they've gone through a training? How do we know that they're physically fit to handle when they do...
Who are we talking about?
Firefighters.
And they do work a shift and get out on a call, and they haven't worked in a year.
Well, you have to be careful with that, getting labor trouble law with physical fitness requirements.
But we won't get their paperwork, and next thing we know, we've got their time cards. And we're like, how can I pay you if I don't even have your paperwork? And that's a liability to me.
No, I, I, I understand.
That's my thing.
I just, I, I guess maybe not all of it.
That's also something that has to be addressed, Chief.
Yes. Right, it does. That's why I wanted to address it today. When I saw this one, I thought, okay, we need to talk about this. I know Drake...
Enough for our next meeting?
You put it on the agenda.
I would say like the employee handbook. When we start to discuss that, we can see what we can and-
I know Drake works.
And Scott doesn't help.
No, Cole Raker. Has he had a paycheck?
Yeah, he was.
Okay. Then I'm okay to vote on these two.
Um, have you reviewed these, Stephen?
I, I just was looking at them. Uh, thing that I, I have three in front of me. Is that all that way?
Only have two.
Only have two.
I only had two.
Okay. One should have been in your email or in your-
I got, I got the, I think Raker.
Yeah. I got Drake.
I was trying, they have, there's-
And I have Scott, I have a Hendershot here.
You have Scott? I don't have Scott.
I have Scott.
Here's, are there, there should be four pages. Oh, I'm sorry. You did miss a page. There's Drake's.
Thank you.
Okay. Did you get two subs?
I have two.
Drake and Scott?
Yes. No, I don't have Scott. I have Cole.
Okay. There's, there's Scott. Sorry. I tried to sort them while we were, there's Scott and Drake. Drake?
Scott.
Okay. They're identified.
Nope.
I understand the gist of what all of them are. I don't have a problem with any of them as long as legal counsel believes that they're legally sufficient.
Well, item, I'm looking at Cole Raker, item four, five and six have not been filled in. Four is whether it's a single transaction or an annual transaction. Five is the name of the contractor or vendor that's at issue. Six is the description of the contractor purchase.
So, see, this is-
Those are not filled in. The description of my financial interest is filled in as I make $17 an hour working for the fire department. I also work with my brother Scott Raker and father Doug Raker. Presumably, they are also on the fire department?
Yes. And they did not respond back on the email. I sent them all emails and I didn't do it for them. I gave them suggestions on how it needed to be completed and asked them to send it back to me. I didn't send it to their supervisor because it's not their supervisor's job to do it for them. And that's what we run into with-
I think we should approve the two Hendershots because they look like they're-
If they're filled out correctly, we should approve them.
Yeah, the only thing about those is it does not specify, well, excuse me, back page, it does say annual disclosure.
Yeah.
See, pull up them if you say that. So, you can-
Yeah.
Interpolate that.
The two Hendershots.
But, uh, so, I can just read it into the record if you like on those two?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. First, Hendershot, uh, well, his title or position with government is not filled in. Government city is fire department. County is Johnson. Name of the contractor is Whiteland Fire Department. Description of contractor purchase is firefighter Whiteland Fire. Description of my file, in, financial interest, Scott Hendershot is my father. And it's an annual disclosure. Second is Scott Hendershot, firefighter and EMT for the fire department in Johnson County. Name of contractor or vendor is Whiteland Fire Department. Description of contractor purchases is fire, fire, Whiteland Fire Department. My description of my financial interest, Drake Hendershot, son. Annual disclosure.
I'll move to approve both those annuals, or the, both those conflict of interest disclosures.
Second.
I have a motion by Joe Saylor, second by Brad Godecker. All of I, all in favor of signifying by saying aye.
Aye.
All nays, nuns, they passed.
All right. We'll ask Mr. Raker to finish filling out his form, I guess.
Yeah. Okay. Accept, new business, acceptance of maintenance bonds, dedication of improvements, Gateway at Whiteland Patch Development.
So, in your packets, there was a memo with some summaries. And then at your seat tonight, there was a revised one with some numbers that were different. Stephen, I don't know if I can review of the date.
Yeah, I got that.
Okay. Um, so, Gateways Phase One, these are the public improvements that they installed and are ready to dedicate to the town. Um, this would be pending legal review of the bonds.
I just need you to run your back, please.
Um, this would be, uh, this is the summary showing the actual construction cost and then what the bond amount would be. Um, this would be subject to Stephen's review and, and approval. Um, but we're looking at the water main, storm sewer, sanitary sewer, public right-of-way interest in the Phase One asphalt, that's for trails. Sorry, forgot to put that word in there. Um, so, and then behind it is the supporting documentation from Compass, who was the contractor who installed the improvements. So, just looking for a motion to accept maintenance bonds and like what.
So, you recommend, you recommend the approval? Okay.
Well, I'll move to approve. Tim?
Second?
Oh, I'll second. I was waiting for Joe to do it.
Okay. Have a motion with Brad Godecker, second with Tim Brown. Go ahead.
Tim Brown?
Yes.
Brad Godecker?
Yes.
Deborah Hendrickson?
Yes.
Task 320.
Right. All right. Review of tax abatement statements of compliance. That's a big thick thing.
Yeah, I'll be there momentarily.
Dude, you could have made a motion just impressing me right now.
Yeah, I did.
Dude, so you called me out.
That's right.
I didn't see.
I could throw you in the list.
I did see that. I was a little tired.
All right. So, this is the third month in a row that we've had abatements to review for their compliance. And this should be the last one. And you have the remainder of those that have been submitted. The, uh, everything on this list, all the abatements have been reviewed by me. And all of them, I'm just double checking here to make sure, I am recommending that you find that they are in substantial compliance. However, there are three that have special notes. The first of the special notes is related to MLP Lot Six. And that was the warehouse building that was destroyed by the tornado. And it obviously had to be restored after it was demolished. And that resulted in there being a, kind of a third cycle of assessed value that the assessor's office and the auditor's office is recommending used. What happens sometimes is it does, a building does not get completed within one single year. And so you get, in order to give the taxpayer the benefit of the full 10 years, you have multiple cycles that kind of are staggered. And in this case, because of tornado, results in a staggering of three. Uh, and so because of this, I felt like it was important to present this to you, make sure that you are okay giving them the stagger for a third cycle. And in this case, it is a very substantial amount, 27 million, um, that is in this third cycle. So, I'm recommending that, I would recommend that you grant the third cycle as the auditor's office is, is recommending. But that is, you're ultimately, you're your call. Um, so that's one thing that we need to take action on. And near the bottom, the MLP Land Two, I have recommended it have a substantial compliance finding. However, the actual AV in this case is only 51% of the estimate. And if you look at the numbers, you'll see that, that it was estimated originally at approximately 50 million. It's right now at 25 million. But they have estimated their start date to be April 30th, 2025, which is this year, just a, you know, month and few days ago. And they've estimated their completion to be in November of 2025. So, they still have some more time to complete the additional, you know, AV. Um, and because of that, oh, and by the way, they, they also divided this property into two lots instead of just a single lot. And the, the first lot is what has the 25 million in it. And they, they'll have time to build the second. So, uh, my recommendation at this point is substantial compliance with that understanding. And then the last one on the list is Turn 14, which is a personal property abatement. And, uh, their estimated assessed value was not given, uh, but their estimated cost of the project was 26 million. Actual cost of the project, and by the way, they're confidential, so, uh, record, uh, what you see there on your report. Uh, and their completion date is not until 2027. So, just wanted to point that out. Uh, their estimated average salary is 52,000. Their actual average salary is 48,000. So, they're quite close there. And number of employees to be 250. They're currently at 51. So, they're on their way. Again, they've got two more years before.
Why is it taking four years? Four and a half years?
Uh, as I remember, uh, well, actually, I'm thinking of a different one. In any event, these projects sometimes take, you know, ramping up over the course of years. And, and they, you know, gave themselves that much time.
I need a thought.
Uh, to get, get it all ramped up. So, uh, if, um, if there's any that you don't want to give that substantial compliance finding to, then we need to have a hearing. Obviously, give them notice and have a hearing within 30 days. Otherwise, I would recommend that you find them all in substantial compliance.
That's what we're paying for.
Yeah.
I agree.
Did you, I'm sorry, Tim, I couldn't hear you. Did you make a motion?
No, I, I was saying that's, we're paying to take care of our best interest.
Oh, yeah.
He kind of agrees. I would make a motion, but it's a long one. So, I'll make a motion to approve.
To find all of those taxpayers on the, uh, compliance summary in substantial compliance.
There you go.
I'll second it.
Thank you. I was trying to figure it out in my head.
Okay, roll call.
Tim Brown?
Yes.
Brad Godecker?
Yes.
Joe Saylor?
Yes.
Deborah Hendrickson?
Yes.
Task 420. And I put together a little spreadsheet every year and, uh, just to show like year over year where we're at. And we went up 23% in assessed value at 143 million dollars added. Um, we're now just even with the buildings, not, not the rest of the town, uh, but just with the buildings that have abatements, 635 million dollars in assessed value. So, and they've added 1,200 employees over last year from where they were at with, um, this time last year.
That's amazing.
And let's circle back to the MLP Lot Six question about the third cycle. What's your pleasure? Are you willing to provide the third cycle?
Can you, can you explain it to me again? I've had a hard time following you.
Okay. Uh, basically, the idea and then the policy of the talent has been to make sure that the taxpayer who has been granted an abatement gets the full, and if it's a 10-year abatement, gets the full benefit of, of the 10-year abatement. And because in reality, what often happens is you get part of the building assessed in one year and the next year, you get the remainder of it assessed. You end up with a split sort of assessment or, or a tiered or, uh, staggered assessment. And so if you were, for example, if you had a $25 million assessment in the first year and then a 50, total of 50,000 in the second year, meaning an additional 25 million, if you didn't stagger and have a second 10-year cycle with that second 25 million, at the end of the original 10 years, they would have only gotten nine years of abatement benefit on that second 25 million. And so by doing a second cycle or a second stagger, second tier, whatever you want to call it, in year 11 of the whole, you know, project, they will get abatement, ends up being a 5% abatement on that 11 year, on 25 million. Years two and two through 10, they would get their abatement percentage based upon a total of 50 million. Year one, it's 25 million. Year 11, it's 25 million. But to make that work, it's, they, they stagger it, they cycle it. They have two cycles that, that run. Um, and that again is just to make sure that the taxpayer is getting the full benefit of the 10 years that they were granted for.
Okay.
So, because of tornado, there was a third cycle?
Yeah. In this case, it was obviously an unusual situation.
I, I, I would move to approve, giving them the third cycle on light of the tornado. I agree.
Okay. I agree.
I'll second it.
Go ahead.
Tim Brown?
Yes.
Brad Godecker?
Yes.
Joe Saylor?
Yes.
Deborah Hendrickson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Uh, exception of dedication of the right-of-way.
This is along Emerson. Uh, this is actually, uh, from Stillwater Development, which is a development that'll eventually be in the town of Whiteland. So, this is, um, discussion of dedication of right-of-way on the west side of Emerson. Uh, for, it's actually for the line of still development that'll be in the city of Greenwood. Um, so just the way that they need to do their ingress, egress up the roads and just how they need to make the turn lanes and such. Um, they needed some dedication right-of-way along Emerson. And so it was in your packets. It's a small little rectangle. Basically, I say small, it's probably a couple hundred feet. Um, but just asking if it's okay for us to receive this little strip of, of, uh, Stillwater, little tornado.
Sounds reasonable to me. Anybody else?
Yeah, this is the passing bustler that we approved a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
I'll move to approve, uh, acceptance and dedication per, uh, subject to review.
Second.
I have Joe Saylor made a motion, Brad Godecker seconded. Roll call, please.
Tim Brown?
Yes.
Brad Godecker?
Yes.
Joe Saylor?
Yes.
Deborah Hendrickson?
Yes.
Task 420.
Okay. Next thing on the agenda, consideration of IM, IAM or IM?
Yes, IAM.
GIS proposal.
So, this is a, um, so we already have an account through Esri, which is our GIS. Um, but we have to pay a per-member fee. Um, and that's where we kind of collect the data and place it. Um, IMGIS is similar to, um, other utility or other, um, towns or cities use it utility or just it's an in-the-field type of, um, access to get to our, our GIS mapping. But the one thing that we can't do with Esri and our GIS is, again, we have to pay for separate memberships and we can't layer like water lines on top of sewer lines, fire hydrants.
869.
And so it's, it's not as user-friendly. This is a user-friendly, um, type system. The Whiteland uses it. Um, and, uh, I know that they said that they have 26 other municipalities in the state of Indiana that use this IMGIS. This was actually, uh, when I was here before, um, this was the, the vendor I was trying to push through. Um, and then, uh, when the, the town decided to move forward with Schneider GIS, I will tell you that that one was not user-friendly and about three times the cost of what this is, um, what this was. Um, so this will help us. Not only we can do work orders through it, um, but we can do code enforcement. We can run a lot of our, um, our software through it. It's, it's not as expensive as some of the other ones that have been presented to us. We're not quite ready for, you know, what, um, uh-
869185.
Tyler, what do you guys, what do you guys use? Enterprise? Enterprise. Um, we're not quite ready for that. That's a six-foot year investment. This is something just to get us started and get our folks out in the field. It's, um, unlimited amount of membership for, uh, users and we can set the different levels, um, of user. We can do the same features that we can within our GIS. We can upload, uh, pictures. We can upload data and information. Like, we do flush hot fire hydrants. We can input that information. We can even, like I said, do code enforcement through it. We can even, like I said, do code enforcement through it. So it's something that I'd like for us to pursue. It's $8,000 annually with a $2,000 setup. It's actually cheaper than when I got a quote for it back in 2020. So we won't tell them that. But and it's cheaper than what New Whiteland is paying on an annual basis, $9,000. So I do have this before legal counsel right now. Just if this is something you guys would want to consider. Obviously, I would ask for approval pending legal counsel's review and such. But it is something that I think would be helpful for us internally and out in the field.
I would share that town of Whiteland this afternoon reported that they are very pleased.
New Whiteland.
Excuse me, New Whiteland, thank you. Reported they're very pleased with their relationship and how that's been working out.
I'm all for it. I love it. We use it every day. And I think it's a big asset for the employees and the office staff. I mean, we put everything on it. I mean, we use it constantly.
Right now, we have a lot of paper. We have work orders coming through Keystone and our key utility. And then we have to go out manually and we come back. And this would be a system that it's not fully integrated with like Keystone or things of that nature. But we're in the process. Michaela and I have been working on looking at a new accounting software along with Melissa. But we've started interviewing accounting software to come forth with a conversion potential in the future. So.
I, when we started this, I fought it a lot. And then finally, they made it easy for me because I was the last one to switch over. When I finally did switch over, it was very nice and it's user-friendly.
You have them?
We have something like this, but not this company, but our company. They made it easy on me because they know how to sell.
The other good thing is that it'll cross-pollinate. I guess that's my term I've been using. It'll talk to ArcGIS and then vice versa. So if we go out and map something, like so we just paid to have our super mapped, our water is, we've got a draft of that utility mapped. It'll talk to both. So we, whatever one we update, it'll talk to the other one. So that was a key thing for me, too.
So do you just need our direction or do we actually have to make a vote or?
Approval for us to go ahead and sign the proposal pending legal counsel with, you know, the terms of endearment.
I'll move to authorize proceeding on the proposal subject to review and approval by the council.
Second.
I have a motion by Joe Saylor, second by Brad Goddecker for approval to move forward. Roll call.
Tim Brown?
Yes.
Brad Goddecker?
Yes.
Joe Saylor?
Yes.
Deborah Hendrickson?
Yes.
Pass four to zeros.
Okay. Appointment of Parks and Recreation Board Member Shane Stidham.
We just thought you were done with that. So the individual that you appointed, there was one individual that had to resign due to his workload and traveling and just didn't think it was fair to be able to take that position when somebody else could fulfill it. So I reached out to Deb. She was kind of my committee in selection previously and went back to the drawing board with the candidates that we did have. And one that just really kind of kept popping up to me and would reach out to me was Shane Stidham. So I would ask that you all approve appointing him to the Parks and Recreation Board for the remainder of the term that Jared Ferguson was in, which he was the four-year member. So three years and 3.75 years or three, almost three and a half years, he would fulfill that term.
I move to approve for Shane Stidham to the park board member, as a park board member.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Brad Goddecker to approve Shane Stidham, second by Joe Saylor. Roll call.
Tim Brown?
Yes.
Brad Goddecker?
Yes.
Joe Saylor?
Yes.
Deborah Hendrickson?
Yes.
Pass four to zero.
Okay, resolution 2025-06 approving appointment of Michaela Rich as Deputy Clerk Treasurer. Next on the agenda.
Right. Because of the circumstances with Melissa, we looked into the documentation as to the appointment of deputies. And we have an oath that was signed by Michaela and sworn to by Melissa, which implicitly indicates that she was appointed by Melissa. But we don't have a separate document pointing Michaela and signed by Melissa. And we do have bonds in the process. And so it was thought to be prudent to go ahead and create a document that evidences her appointment. And the statute also says that the council is to approve or that the appointment of deputies are subject to the approval of the council. We don't have any documentation of Michaela's approval as a deputy. So this would just, you know, take care of papering the documentation of that appointment and the council's approval.
I will move to approve resolution 2025-06 formalizing Michaela's appointment.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Tim Brown?
Yes.
Brad Goddecker?
Yes.
Joe Saylor?
Yes.
Deborah Hendrickson?
Okay.
Pass four to zero.
All right, next to the last thing on the agenda. Stormwater requirements waiver request from Whiteland Community High School Phase Three.
So this one was in your packet from, it was a letter from Crossroad that is their engineer. They, with our new stormwater release rates, they are unable to meet those release rates. And so in their letter, they are requesting a waiver, which is the process and then comes before the council.
Was this related to their, where they were going under the walking path and they weren't going to be able to have enough fill over top or as much fill as they were supposed to with the new pipe size? Did they come in and talk about that a few months ago?
They have that. This is a different phase. So there's like six phases right now of this project. And so this is just another phase of that, the phase three. They also, each phase have had to go to the Johnson County Drainage Board as well. So they'll be releasing into the Brewer Ditch. They have received on June 3rd, I did not get this in your packets, I just got this Monday. But they did receive their approval from the Johnson County Drainage Board because we match the Johnson County Drainage Board with their stormwater release rates. So we both have the same, because that's what IDIM has kind of pushed out on us. So Johnson County Drainage Board approved it. It's a formality for them to come for you all for a waiver to, because they are unable to meet that, those release rates. So they're requesting approval.
So what's their problem? The problem is they can't?
They can't meet the release rates on the release of their stormwater.
They hold it on site and release.
So where's it going?
It's still going to Brewer Ditch, but they can't. They don't have like enough room.
They can't slow it down or that kind of thing.
It's the same amount of water they've always been throwing off. We just changed the number because IDIM requires them to, us to.
But if IDIM required us to, then, then how can we okay it?
Well, we can still have, that's why these waivers are here. Now, there would be, and I didn't memorize it, this is not my forte as far as like the, so right now, all of their detention is underground. So they put these chambers underneath the parking lots. Pretty much every parking lot has an underground detention. They've pretty, pretty much maxed out. And so for them, again, I don't know. Did you look at this to say like, what's the actual release? The difference, like, you know, say we're at a 0.5 and they're 0.6. Like, it's not a significant like difference from where, like what our max release rate would be.
I know the county's been really hard on them on trying to get them, what do you want to say? In the, in the compliance that they want them to be in, that they still, they just can't be.
They don't have enough area to put more underground detention, retention, excuse me, and to hold it and release it later on. What it is, that's the whole problem. We've put a lot of them in Barksville. And since they don't have the land, they put it under the parking lot. Well, they're saying they don't have no more room to put it in. So that's why they're asking for this waiver.
Tim and Slim, you guys probably know more about this than I do. Does anything jump out at you about this that's problematic?
I read it and I didn't see nothing wrong with it. I understand the point that they've got no room to put that. And we, we've changed all this under the parking lot retention to hold things back. So they have stepped up and did the best that they could with the equipment they got. Now, they can't go in and tear up the parking lot they got that's more costly on them to put it in. But later on, it's probably something that they'll look into. If they're going to redo the parking lot, then they might put more in and kind of help achieve what they need to do. I didn't see nothing wrong with it.
Almost all the parking lots they put in over there.
Yes.
It just, pretty much the whole underneath is underground retention. But it also involves the runoff from those parking lots, too. You can't capture all of it.
Okay.
Your hard surface change is how much you have to capture, right?
Right.
Yeah. I would see no problem in it.
Okay.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
I got a motion from Joe Saylor, a second from Brad Goddecker to approve the waiver request for Whiteland Community High School Phase Three. Roll call.
Tim Brown?
Yes.
Brad Goddecker?
Yes.
Joe Saylor?
Yes.
Deborah Hendrickson?
Yes.
Pass four to zero.
Okay, the last thing is the culvers?
That one did come up. I'm sorry, there was a new agenda.
I know, but I thought you said there was something else.
It's something else for culvers, my bad. That was on the agenda and then I accidentally deleted. This is an authorization to enter into the water main extension agreement and to accept stormwater easement, drainage and utility easements, water hydrant and meter easements for the Whiteland project.
They're saying costing the town nothing though, right? They're paying for it. They're paying for the extension of the water and everything.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm on board.
So am I.
All right, I'll move.
And I, I thought it was.
Yep.
And I agree, even though it's nice to have them here, we just can't give away the keys to the kingdom.
Right.
Okay, Joe Saylor made a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
And that would be subject to attorney review and so forth.
Subject to attorney review?
Yep.
Second?
I'll second it.
Tim Brown seconded. Michaela?
Tim Brown?
Yes.
Brad Goddecker? Joe Saylor?
Yes.
Deborah Hendrickson?
Yes, ma'am.
Pass four to zero.
Okay. Director of Administration or Director of Operations?
It was under our understanding that the way we were doing it was satisfactory. But after relooking at the ordinance or the, the state law, it does have to livestream. So be prepared, we'll put a link on the agenda.
I quit.
And, but the one question I have is, we talked about this previously, not everybody was in the same seats that you're in today. We only have to retain the live video stream link for 90 days. We have a YouTube account, doesn't cost us anything to put it out there. So I figured we would probably just go ahead and continue that as, as already done. My only question is, there are some communities that allow public participation virtually. Is that something that you all want to do? Talk about maybe next time? Start out with not allowing public participation? Meaning we have to have somebody monitoring the livestream to, you know, and there would be only time, certain times public comment could be taken, public hearings and the public comment. But that is something that I wanted clarification from you all on the desire.
Well, I think public comment at the end of the meeting, like we always do.
I think it's great that we could put the public into it because some people can't come to meetings with a single mom, a single dad cooking dinner, getting kids ready, especially in the winter when schools are, I think it's a good thing. Just, that's just my opinion.
I'm fine with it.
Okay. Do we need a vote on that?
Consensus is fine.
Okay.
I mean, I'm, I'm all for having the, the records or the livestream stay up indefinitely if there's no additional cost as well, like.
I'm on board with that.
I mean, because like, I mean, oh, hey, this is what we thought three years ago and that changed. Okay, yeah, like, you know, like an opinion change, great, and we can, you know, have access to it or something.
Okay.
I think we're all good with it.
The question, if you're going to have the public, I guess, make live comments, how are you going to kind of regulate, I guess, what they would say like, hey, I need a pavo on my street fix third? Stuff kind of like that, not more.
Well, they get like, what, a minute and a half, two minutes?
Yeah, at the end of the meeting. The rules will still be the same.
So if they want to grab pal pavo, they'll grab pal pavo.
You know, I'm just thinking of some of the things that may come about or arise from.
Right. But it's no different, they could come in here and talk about it. So I mean, at least it's giving them opportunity. And maybe the town people feel that we're actually listening to them because you know all the comments we got last time. They said we don't take anybody's opinion in consideration. So it just might open a door.
We did probably have someone with their finger on the button in case there's an unfortunate incident like happened to Greenwood.
So that, and that's kind of where we are going to have to do a, like in the next three weeks test. And where there's somebody, like you said, monitoring it, maybe we turn off the chat and it's only available when there's public comment. And then that's when we can activate that. So we are planning to, to get a Zoom subscription. That's what the county uses for a lot of their meetings. And I've, you know, sat in on a virtual meeting and I've attended where they've had virtual. And so same thing on that. And we'll do our best to be ready by July 1st. The second thing is to, so the Department of Revenue, we have to pay our taxes to that, the state and local taxes. And we ran into a hiccup where they wouldn't talk to anybody but Melissa. And when she was out, we, obviously, we have bills to pay. So we had worked with Adam and Stephen and we dropped, or found a Department of Revenue Power of Attorney that would allow Michaela and myself to be able to at least speak to the Department of Revenue if there's an absence unless the clerk treasurer. And Richard has signed that, but Stephen had suggested that we ask the council to ratify that, that signature and allow them to then talk to us so we can pay them.
I'll move to ratify it. Second.
Okay, so I don't understand why there has to be a second representative because there isn't one now.
Well, there isn't one now and they won't talk to us.
Right.
They won't even, they wouldn't even talk to Adam. Because our financial, I mean, we want to pay them.
Right, I understand that.
And when you say second?
Yeah, second representative as individual.
So you're saying it should just be one? You're saying it should just be?
Right, I see what you're pointing to.
Because, and, and it's not anything to view, but any payment has to be implemented by the clerk treasurer, clerk treasurer's office. So I don't know what you would.
They just, they put that on there.
Okay. Okay.
But I think it was just as a.
If this is, if this is just for them to be able to talk to them versus authorizing payments, does it matter?
I see what you're saying.
Yeah, because it, it doesn't say, it's just a power of attorney to talk to them, that's all, right?
Right.
Okay, well, I'm fine with it then.
But it don't say to just talk to them. Does it?
Well, I mean, I think the statute says that payments have to go through the clerk's office. Nobody else can pay them.
Right.
You can't.
It kind of locks it down now, yeah.
Okay. All right.
Is that what you're saying? It kind of locks it down to the clerk treasurer paying the bill? Okay.
Yeah, you just need a vote or consensus.
Well, I think we had a motion, so I'll just complete the motion.
Okay, Joe made a motion.
And I think somebody seconded it.
Brad did. Yes, I did.
Did you, Brad?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Joe Saylor made a motion. Brad Goddecker seconded it.
Tim Brown?
Yes.
Brad Goddecker? Joe Saylor?
Yes.
Deborah Hendrickson?
Yes.
Pass four to zero.
Last thing I have is I just want to say, Lila has done.
Congratulations and thank you for stepping up.
And I'm super proud of everything she's done in the last.
We kind of like her now.
She can't go anywhere.
I appreciate that.
Do you not want to talk about this Core Five letter?
No, she don't.
You guys can talk about it if you want. I just, yeah. She asked me what, what he should do. And I said it might not be a bad idea to give the council an update on where things are at. This is for their second building. I will tell you, remember, we offered an, we, we granted an extension of an abatement for the Heinz building as well. Not heard a peep at all from them. At least Core Five is trying to stay in communication with us and. And I mean, we can't.
Have we already extended, have we already extended for them, Mike?
We did.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
But it was kind of a, so at least they're, they're providing us with some sort of, you know.
I, I mean, I'm.
Okay.
I made promises. We said, hey, we'll do this. Different than, you know, like our, our response. Yeah, they'd have to be persuasive.
Okay.
Before we wrap up, since we're talking about abatements, I, I am reminded, there is, one of the abatements that we granted, looks like it was back in 2022 for UCP Uptown Commercial. Nothing has happened on that. They're way past their completion, estimated completion date. And we haven't received any, you know, CF1s because they haven't done anything. So nothing's been triggered. My suggestion is that you authorize me or Carmen to communicate to the owner that if they want a tax abatement on that, they need to start from scratch again and reply.
I agree.
At this point.
And I brought that up to them. I reached out to all of the developers that hadn't had any movement. And that was, that was two years ago to Uptown Commercial Partners. They're the 40 acres across from Cooper Tires. Heinz is their second building and then Core Five. And at least we got some reception from Heinz and Core Five. As of right now, we have to send violation letters to them for mowing their grass right now. So it's, other than that, I've not talked to the broker, not talked to the, the owners of that property.
Maybe they're not as uptown as they thought.
Okay.
Consensus on that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Department have report. Now, Slim, you have anything to say? Okay.
Already been marked.
I know. Rick, do you have anything, chief? And the other chief left. Counsel comment?
I got a comment. Won't take long. Where we at on the garage, town garage?
Uh, they were supposed to have some plans today to give to you guys to look at. And I didn't get them, so that's going to be a conversation tomorrow. So it's, it's in the drawing phase and they're looking at how to get you guys to take approval right now.
Just seems like you're having a lot of issues with this one person. I mean, when is the cutoff point to start fresh with someone else? That's what I guess I'm curious. Because this has been a long time in the making for you guys. And I, in my personal opinion, I think someone needs to put their foot down and say, this is what's going to happen. If you guys can't straighten this up, we're going to give you this amount of time or we're going somewhere else. Because they're just pulling you along now. Now it's getting to the point, it's got to be aggravating to you and your guys and everybody who uses that shop. I mean, it's got to be an aggravation point that you don't need to deal with. So I, I think some hard conversations probably you, probably get a little aggravated with that.
All the other things that they were trying to settle on was the foundation. Because I guess in the GEO report, it's a little, it was going to have keelical pillars down in the ground. So they were trying to decide if they were going to do that or there was a, I can't think of it off the top of my head, another kind of pillar to help the foundation support.
Right. Sometimes they post delay, have to lift it over in our area. But yeah, I just think it's dragging on so long for you guys. It's not fair to you guys to not have your ability.
Also have, trying to do a couple of other things at the same time. So maybe all too much at once, maybe.
Just a thought. I was just curious. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm good.
Okay, public comment? Going, going, gone. Okay.
Thank you, Deb.